I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's April 19, 2022, West Liberty City Council meeting. Present is Jose Zacharias, Dana Dominguez, Karen McCarron, Omar Martinez, and Diane Veronic, and myself. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. Motion to approve agenda?
Certainly.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So after we approve the agenda, we're going to move into the closed session, as we spoke about. Pursuing to the Iowa Code Section 21.51(c), the council would like to go into closed session to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent where its disclosure would likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the government body in that litigation.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second. Any discussion? Councilman Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dominguez?
Yes.
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 Okay, so we will go into closed session now. It's 7:30. Folks, welcome. So we're going to get started. Everybody settled. Thank you. We'd like to enter into the open session portion of our meeting. I have a motion to... Motion to open into open session? In second. Any discussion? Jose? Dana? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Open session is now in session. So we've gone through, if anybody has a copy of the agenda tonight, we've gone through items one and two under A, under item A. We're moving into item three, Discussion and Appropriate Action Regarding West Liberty Rural Township Fire and EMS Appointment or, I'm sorry, Association Correspondence dated April 7, 2022. I'd like to remind everybody that there is no action that will be taken by the council with this tonight. We remain committed to mediation and to moving this forward. We are expediting the review of the MOU that was sent out, despite just receiving it last night. And that's one of the reasons why we are... we were unable to put it on the agenda. Yeah, so that's... got. We are committed to mediation. We are expediting the review. And we will be working on this as we move forward. Does anybody have any comments? Council? Okay. So we're going to move forward with item four, the mayoral equipment and proclamation. So item A, we'd like... is Tom Alberdi here? Hi. Before we start this part two in the last meeting, there was sort of some confusion as to the process for making sure that there was gender balance for this particular... for this... our boards and commissions. And the city has been working actively since October to achieve that gender balance to no avail. So I just wanted... there was... that is... that is a little bit different than the message that was given in the last meeting. So I wanted everybody to know that the city has been working on that since October. But... and we are moving forward with the choices that we have tonight. So we'd like... I'd like to appoint Tom Alberdi to the Planning and Zoning Board tonight. And I'd also like to appoint David Smith. Dave, are you here?
Yeah.
Very... I thought I saw you. To the Board of Adjustments. Can I have a motion? Motion to approve. Second. And I'm sorry, is this consent or...? Consent. Thank you. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That passes 5-0 to appoint Tom Alberdi to the Planning and Zoning Board and David Smith to the Board of Adjustments. Thank you. Would like to move forward with item five on the agenda, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Motion to approve Consent Agenda. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. The agenda is passed 5-0. We would... Sorry, folks, I'm nervous. I apologize. So we're moving forward to the... do we do A and B or that's all covered, correct?
Yes. Madam Mayor, you will first...
Okay.
Number six, and then you will do B separately.
So we're moving on to item six, Vendor Voucher Claims. Item A, Vendor Voucher Claims List 1 in the amount of $666,978.07. Motion. Second. Any discussion on the voucher claims? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll move on... oh, sorry, that passes 5-0 to approve item A. Move on to item B, Vendor Voucher Claims List Number 2 in the amount of $194 for Cardinal Signing Graphics. Motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? I abstain. So that passes 4-0 with one with Councilwoman McCarron abstaining. We are going to move into the public comments and our correspondence. I'm going to read this, and then I also have a statement that I'd like to make. This is a time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. Please remember, no action may be taken. I have a microphone up here. We also have a Spanish language translator available if anybody would like to utilize her services. So please let us know. You... we'd like everybody who speaks to state their name, keep their comments to no more than two minutes. And I will hold everybody to that. Additionally, I ask for this to be a productive, safe, and professional environment and all. I know that there is a lot of conversation around this topic that I believe many of you are here for tonight. And I know that there's a lot of passion and hard work that has gone in on all sides towards this moment here. But I would... I would like to remind everybody if that this will be a respectful session. And anybody who does not maintain composure or who is not respectful, I will ask them to leave. And that's on all sides. So I appreciate that. Thank you. So we'll move into public comments. And I invite anybody who wants to speak... we'd like Rena to just make that announcement in Spanish for us. Thank you. And anybody who wishes to speak, please come to the microphone. I'm going to set a timer in a second.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, and fellow residents. First, I appreciate...
Can you please state your name?
My name is Dolar. I'm from West Liberty. I have an office down in town. And first, I understand you being a little nervous. But I want you to know that this is a small town. This is a family issue. It's like family. And so I hope that we can discuss it openly. And as I'm coming before you today, Council, and Madam Mayor, I'm not coming before you on behalf of the West Liberty Rural Fire District. That is a case where there is litigation. This is a situation, as opposed to litigation, involving the West Liberty... the volunteer members of the West Liberty Fire Department. And the issue is that since 1875, we've had a volunteer fire department.
You're at one minute.
I'm going to count apart where I said not to be nervous.
You're good.
Good. Well, since 1875, we've had the volunteer fire department. But it has devolved, even though there have been 150 years in the last 200... the last two and a half years, that the situation has turned that the volunteers feel they can no longer volunteer in this environment. And so I'm coming before you for a resolution of the situation. I'm not looking to mediate litigation or asking for it. This is a situation that involves between the city council and the residents of the town. It doesn't involve any litigation. And so what's important to understand is that volunteers have stated that they can no longer volunteer in the environment come May 1st. And since May 1st is coming around, that doesn't give us time for a mediation or dispute. We've been looking for a path forward for two and a half years, and we haven't found one. And so we took it upon ourselves to draft a memorandum of understanding, which in short is a path forward. And so it's been ratified. Everyone here, maybe not everyone here, but almost everyone here will vouch that it is reasonable to all parties. And as representatives of the government, this is what would be necessary to look for.
You're at a time frame.
You have to get... you are the paykeepers as the city council.
Thank you, that's time.
I appreciate some latitude because this isn't being discussed openly.
Can I give him by two minutes?
Um, no.
Everybody's entitled for two minutes.
So I can't give by two minutes to him?
No, you can't.
No, but if you'd like to do two minutes.
No, I want him to continue. It said five on the method.
The public will just discuss that they're behind this plan? And I suppose that's all that I need to say as this representative governor. I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you, please. No, please. Mr. Thorpe, please sit down. You have your two minutes, thank you.
Madam Mayor, the council asks you not to address any comments to Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark is the attorney representing the rural district in a lawsuit which was filed against the city, which allegations were made regarding breach to due charity duty and constructive fraud during the penancy of the litigation. It's highly inappropriate for you to make comments to opposing council. So I ask that you not make comments. Thank you.
I'm going to turn the mic up a little bit.
I'm sorry. Could you not hear... was it me you couldn't hear? Mr. Clark?
I can't hear for the last 15 minutes.
Could you get somebody to turn up the... so that might also clear.
So this is my sound system. I'm the band teacher. The microphones don't work unless they're very close to your face, which is why you couldn't hear Mr. Clark.
But if you put your face right over to the microphone, you can hear it pretty clearly. So that would probably help.
There's a little boost to it.
I don't restate what I said other than Mr. Clark is the opposing counsel in a lawsuit which has been filed against the city. Because of there's pending litigation, I ask that the council not respond directly to Mr. Clark during the penancy of the litigation. Thank you. Sorry you couldn't hear.
Madam Mayor, since I couldn't... may I access the microphone?
Counsel, did we all hear what Mr. Thorpe had to say? Now, I'm limiting everybody to one pass through. And two minutes. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to come and speak? If other people would like to speak, you can... if you'd like, you can get in the lines and you have a sort of a sense of who wants to come talk. You're welcome to do so. And thank you, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Delita Ardis, a resident of West Liberty, also an elected official in Muskegon County extension council. So I certainly understand government proceedings and appreciate that. I appreciate that you said you're going to expedite sort of decision-making on the MOU. This has been presented to you. I'd like more clarity on what expedite means. And secondly, most of us have had an opportunity to read through that. Regardless of what your decision is, if there are points in there that are not agreeable, then I really hope that there's good explanation behind each one of those points so that we can all better understand. Something part of the issue in this whole ongoing saga has been a lack of transparency and a lack of information. For us to be better informed, we need to really understand what your points are, what your issues are. And today, I haven't really heard those in detail. So I would just suggest that the council really look at this memorandum of understanding and be able and prepared to respond to each of those points.
Thank you. And I've seen emails from the... it's intense, see you personally. Expediting means... again, we received this last night. I received this last night. And council didn't receive it until this morning. So we... by expediting, we need to have the opportunity to look over it, to understand it. This is... this is a proposed contract, right? And it's not advisable to anyone to enter into a contract without making sure that we've had the opportunity to read and understand and ask the questions of our legal counsel. So can we do something by that May 1st date? We are certainly committed to trying as far as the timeline goes. It's very, very tight. But as I've said, to me, that's what... expediting a process that, you know, could take months and months and months we're trying to fit into at that May 1st. And so that's, to me, what expediting means. And it means going through each of those things and making sure that we understand them and making sure that what we want to do with them. I don't know if anybody wants to add. Does anybody else want to speak?
You guys don't have months and months and months. That's the problem.
Who's speaking?
You.
Hi. My name is Rubia Ruiz. I am a... sorry. My name is Rubia Ruiz. I am a resident of West Liberty. I've been following the posts on Facebook, and I know it's kind of... there's a lot on there. Also went through this and this information doesn't seem like it's brand new to you. It is something that has been discussed for the last two and a half years. And based on what they've already given you, I just wasn't sure what was the problem. There, keep it answered. No.
Thank you. I can only speak for myself, but just so that... I mean, there are three of us here that are... it is brand new to... and the MOU, as was sent, that you folks have all seen, it seems, which is good. It is brand new to all of us because we've not reached this point. We've been back and forth trying to enter into possible mediation or seeing, you know, what that looks like. So it is brand new to us. So there are some of us that have been trying to get up to speed very, very quickly. And to the comment from wherever God or whoever that was, the... we know we don't have months and months and months. And so I was just saying, in normal circumstances or in regular circumstances, these types of things can and do take months, if not years. And so I was explaining by expediting it what we're trying to make them happen in weeks instead of months and years. So I'm sorry to... stop answering what you were saying and then move on. But I don't know if anybody else wants to comment.
Even the council members that have been on for a while, is there something in particular that concerns you about the proposal? Or just the information that they've given during the last two years that...
We need to read... we need to read it because it's a new document. We need to read it. We need to better. We need to send it to the council. The city authority. And then we need to go into the normal procedure to get them to the agenda and so on and so forth. Thank you.
Going from someone super short to taller. So I didn't really have any questions. I think we've... I think we've been asking enough questions. I really just wanted to stay to the community more than anyone else that... I know you've heard this said by chief and the assistant chief, but I really... I want the community to know that we did not come to this decision lightly. And yes, we aren't giving council much time to really address or to say, okay, yes, we'll look into doing this. We want to work with you because it's been two and a half years of delays and no resolution. And dealing with the emotions of stress and sleepless nights of wondering what's going to happen and whether you're going to have volunteers that are going to be able to respond to the calls in the middle of the night or even during the day. Because there's approximately 11 of us that are now, you know, certified medical... certified medically to provide care. And that's a lot of stress when you're dealing with 600 calls a year. And for my own mental health, for the health of my family and my marriage and my kids who don't have the other track meet tonight, seeing that runs are leading up their track meet because I'm here, I needed to know that I have somewhere to move forward. And being in this limbo is just too much for me emotionally and with my fellow volunteers as well. So we are sorry for putting our community in this position. But not only do we want to protect you, we also need to protect ourselves. And if we are not protecting our own mental health and our own emotional well-being, we're not doing really good.
Timing, that was two minutes on the clock.
Do you want to come in?
All right, certainly.
All right. Welcome.
Hello, all. My name is Tom Christensen. I'm the assistant chief. I've been on this department office my 39th year. And it's... it's a very important thing that we need to get through, all of us. And put away our differences. I mean, you need to protect your city. We need to... you need to... we need to protect our rural people. You are part of that also. I want to know... and I understand you're going to look through this. And you really need to look through this. And tell me why it won't work. Now, another thing I want to know is why you're going into an alternative department and an alternative interim chief? I think you need to spend more time on what's going on now and stuff like that. Also, the happy return of the mind of people getting here from another city to take care of a life or property. Thank you all.
Thank you. I think essentially the letter that was dated April 7, that was sent to myself and to the city manager, was received April 11, was essentially, and please correct me if I'm wrong, was essentially a resignation letter. Only that saying, you know, that this is a possibility, right? May 1st. And I think that it is the city's job to make sure that people aren't left without services. So in the end, while we very much are unified here on council that we want to have us come to a favorable resolution for everybody, we also have to make sure that should that not happen, that the citizens aren't left without fire protection and EMS service. And so that's... that is why. It is not what we want, but it is also something that in order to make sure that we have something in place should the resignations move forward on May 1st, that people are not left high and dry.
If I have any time left, don't let it hap...
I would agree. Thank you.
My name is Larry Miller. I was on the department for 33 years. And I've been business in this town for 25 years. And I think both parties, the council and the fire department need to understand what's at stake here because we've got developments coming into town. There's been rumors of West Liberty Foods wanting to build a new plant. That doesn't happen without a good fire department and a good volunteer fire department. And you have one here already. And I would like to encourage everyone that's in business, rural, farmers, whoever, to put pressure on the council and the fire department to get together and get this done because there's too much at stake. Just let this go on.
My name is Mike Price. I live over in Third Street.
A little bit closer, please.
My name is Mike Price. I live in Third Street. I've been around this town for 30 years. First of all, I want to start by thanking Jose Zacharias, Karen McCarron, Diane Veronic, for their spirit and this, for their courage, for doing what needs to be done and doing it right. Regardless of the threats and the hate letters and the innuendo on social media that's nonstop. People don't have time. They're still busy volunteering. But they do have time to sell on social media and run these fine people there. I'm appalled how they've been treated by the press, by the members of the fire department, by the officers of the fire department.
Please keep it civil.
I'm sorry.
Please make sure you keep it civil, Mr. Price.
All right. That wasn't civil?
It's moving.
Are you the judge of civil?
In this meeting, I am, sir. Is there another comments?
My name is Dylan Christensen. I live here in West Liberty. I used to live up in Cedar Falls. And I decided that I wanted to move home because this is my home that I care very much about. And the only thing that I knew when I came back here is that I wanted to be a firefighter. My father, Tom Christensen, is on the department. My uncle Eric is on the department. And that's all I've ever wanted to do was fight fires exciting. But now with all of this going on, and I understand that we can go both ways on both sides, but it's almost to the point where I wouldn't even go home to do it anymore for fear of what's going to happen, for fear of us not being taken care of, taken care of through the city that we need to take care of. So I just want you guys to also think now, what will you do? If this isn't resolved, what's your plan? There's a shortage on there that is... you're not going to get a bunch of new volunteers in here in West Liberty who aren't even paid because of all this going on. I've had friends that I've tried to go home and... I've had friends that have tried to come to the department that won't join because of this. And like I say, I understand both sides. I also have an employee in the city, and I understand how busy we all are. It sucks. I just hope that for the sake of the community that I love so much, my father, that I get to fight fires next to, Chief Sickles, brother and sisters on the department, every consultant, and every single one of you, all members of the city, everybody here loves this city of West Liberty, and there should be no reason how we can't solve this altogether. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Good evening. I'm a little nervous. My name is Blake Kelly. I've been on the department for 28 years. I ran through the memorandum, and I read through a couple other studies, 28 agency agreements. Doesn't take a genius to see that very simple, fair, to all three parties, solution to this whole situation. I don't know what other options you're looking at, but I can't come up with any understanding of how financially the city is going to maintain the fire department anywhere near where we are.
We just want to, I want to make note what, I did read through the memorandum when I got it this morning, and I have no, we have an incredible fire department and our volunteers and the chief run the type ship, and I'm extremely proud of what they do. But my hesitation is, when I think about the fire department separating from the city, is that we are a low-income community. When you think about the residential limitations of our city and what taxes come out of that. We have beautiful, big homes that are going up, yes, but not within the city. We don't get property taxes for those big, beautiful homes. And so what I hope that wouldn't happen when we explore this is that we miss something, that we don't plan ahead and set our volunteers and our fire department up for failure. And not because of the way they operate, but because of the income that they need from our property taxes. And that's just my point of view. And that's just stuff I need to learn more about and things that we need to discuss together. Are there other comments? We
My name is Lawrence Salmy. I have been in business in this town for 55 years. I've been in town, been in business in this town for 55 years. I own that property and it's been certified as welfare under what's going on today. I was here when we were grabbing people off the street, hauling down the city. H K Klein's old station wagon. I was here when Nick Watson come to town and helped us put together the ambulance service. I was on the service, I was on the fire department for 16 years. From all accounts, I've been a people and been around the community since then, when I left town, it seemed as though that the only functioning group in town is the fire department. And the medical people. They get up and they go. I didn't do, or how to do it, or if they got tired, no, they go. Now you're burned out by the, well, too many people are quitting because they're just burned out. Now you folks have got to get your act together. The problem is the city hall, not the fire department.
Please remain civil.
I am civil, I want you to hear it.
I understand. Other comments? So I know we have a comment on Zoom, so we will have that, Brad?
With the three, pardon me.
I'm also happy to read the comment if you'd like me to. With the three old council members, explain to the public why this has taken two and a half years. Can you, is this spread out? Do we know who asked this question? Rachel Seibel. Are you looking to council to give advice? There is a timeline that we are all sort of, now, but I can say for myself, I'm still sort of working on understanding for my identification, how we got here. And it's been a process, but I can't speak for anybody yet. If we don't have comments, we can move on to the next comment.
I'm Lynn Zeeman, I'm a resident of the city, and that question was what I had. I've gotten a lot, sorry, I'm Lynn Zeeman, I'm a resident of the city, and I've gotten a lot of information, mostly from the fire department about their perspective about what's some of the problems they've had and where to move forward. What I haven't seen in any meeting is anything from the city explaining their side of the position. I've been told multiple times, well, I've written letters and have had one council person who has answered them. Everyone else has ignored it. They have not answered in our old council before the election. Since the election, I have gotten better responses. But no one has ever explained what's going on, and I think that's part of the problem. Just thought again. We don't know what the city issues are. So that ramps up our level because all it looks like is a city that's saying, I don't want to talk to you. We can't do it. We hide behind all sorts of things. Before there were legal issues, we were still told that we can't comment on them. And if you want to have a transparent, open discussion to solve this, then we need to know why this became a problem from the city's side, and that's just not happening.
Attorney, could you, Councilor, if you're willing to see?
I'm sorry?
You need a mic?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So the question, both questions related to the timeline and what the city's response was. So I do have a couple of facts. So the volunteer fire department's been providing service to the city since at least 1975. It's been a good working relationship. It's been done pursuant to the city's position, what's called 28E agreement, which is contractual obligation. That contract was set to expire towards the end of last year. When that was set to expire, the city extended to the fire department, the rural district, an opportunity to extend it out so the negotiations, because the district had some concerns regarding the agreement as to the city. So the city offered to extend the timeline out several months so there could be negotiations. That was rejected by the rural district and fire department. And instead, a lawsuit was filed on July 15th, 2021. And the petition, which was filed, the petition that was filed was a petition for petition for partnership dissolution for accounting for damages, for constructive fraud, for declaratory judgment, and for temporary and permanent injunction. So at that juncture, then, the city responded, denied the allegations that were being made against it as breach of due charity duty or any of the other allegations, constructive fraud, et cetera, and filed a responsive pleading to that. Since that time, since last fall, the city has committed to and may commit to mediation. The parties discussed mediators and couldn't reach a conclusion. The rural district and the fire department proposed, I think, two. I think the city proposed two. Neither were acceptable to the other parties, and then it stalled at that juncture. Since that time, this has really come to me head, because as the Madam Mayor indicated, was on April 7th, the city received the letter from the rural district and its members indicating that there would be a mass resignation of volunteer fire personnel effective May 1st. And that's a serious, obviously, safety concern for the city.
And just to clarify, it was April 11th that it was received at the city?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, it was written the 7th, it was received the 11th. And then the, I believe is the following day, a request was made for that letter, which requested the city commit to a 28E agency agreement going forward, ask for the city to either respond, or the letter was going to be distributed to the press. The city didn't have a chance to respond kindly to the letter, but it did recommit to mediation, which is an informal dispute resolution process where there's third parties brought, neutrals brought into here. Then then we have once again committed, again, after we, the city received the 28, the first time it received the 28E, the proposed 28E agency agreement was last night at 6 o'clock. The city's distributed it, they've given me a copy. The city wants, needs to review it. It's obviously a fairly lengthy contract, which involves the safety and protection of the city. And so it's desperately trying to bring about a conclusion to this before May 1st, which is the date that the volunteer fire departments, or many of them have indicated that they've resigned. So the city is still committed to engaging in mediation and will do so immediately if all parties are in agreement to that, and that we've reached out to, the city's reached out again to commit to that and try and get that going so we can meet this May 1st deadline. And it still remains hopeful that that will happen. I don't know if that answers the question as to what the delay was.
What you failed to mention is the fact that the fire department was looking for the accounting from the city, and the city wouldn't provide it.
If you guys just answer, I don't know why you just answered. They need to know what's the problem, what's the real problem, how everything started and why, and from where. That's what they need to know. So as a firefighter, I know what's going on. You got people that they are not part of the fire department, they want to know the asking and details.
So last night, the city received the contract, the proposed 28E agency agreement.
Before that, what was the problem? Why did you reject the various proposals?
The proposal was received last night, which is a contract.
What's the problem? Clear. What's the problem? How everything is started? Why? Why? What's the problem? They want to know, they need to know why. We just drinking all the water, and you guys have spent a lot of money on, we're drinking the water because there's a lot of kids on the fire department, why? Why? They need to know why. What's going on? I'm sorry, I know it's two minutes, and this is going to be the last minute. I'm sorry. But if I give you guys time to be here, and then I give my time to serve in the fire department at the same time all night, and we can take all the time to explain to people why this is going on? Why? From where? Everything's up.
We Okay, a couple of different things. Let's try to keep it to one person at a time at the microphones so that everybody can hear as well. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I said there's a person, where are we? Yeah, great. Please.
Brad, I'm one of the rural trustees, and I have been working with members of the council to try to resolve this problem since, well, for a good year and a half, two years now. I do not totally agree with everything that your attorney said. In fact, I dispute some of the things that he said. The council members have not been transparent. They've not been truthful.
Those are allegations, that's Did I, did I not, sir, just stop him?
We've never had an explanation of why you're against the things that the rural tribe do. You know, just like other people have said, one of the main things that the rural has been wanting since we started this process was equal representation to make decisions for the good of our community. And the members of the council have denied that. They've stated more than once, they want total control. And the rural provides lots of tax money towards the fire and ambulance department. Rural residents deserve representation to help make decisions that affect us and our families and our property. And again, I'll just reiterate what a bunch of people already said. Council members need to be transparent. They need to actually say, you know, why they disagree with something. Not just hide behind, we can't talk about because it's under litigation. The community first.
My name is Dan Weyer. I've been on resident for 63 years. I'm curious as to money, because I think that was a huge factor in how this all got started. The accountability for the fire department funds, some memorial funds. And I'd like to know how you plan on paying an alternate fire department? With the funds that belong to the current fire department, or can you set aside funds in the budget?
I cannot speak to that. I am unable to answer your question. That is just me, and I apologize.
We can have our department ask the board audit on the funds, and that's what started this mess.
And we have done, the audit has been, we did an extra audit last year as well. To my, to my understanding, an extra audit was done. Well, as you all know, like, I came into this, like, guns blazing, let's see what I can find. And to my surprise, my pleasant surprise, the audits that the city has gone through are very thorough. And there's nothing in there that said there's illegal activity going on with funds. We've had two different people audit. We even, the city even put in more money to, to make sure that it was totally complete. And, and I'm coming from you all, saying, I have yet to find anything by what I've tried to look through that ever says anything was mismanaged or illegal with our funds.
Hasn't the audit shown that there hasn't been a separation in your public data?
The audits are online, as I found out really soon. I even have it in my bookbag with highlighters. And that is, I mean, maybe the city management can talk more to this, but that is very common in small towns. And it's something that we, and especially Lee has been really striving for to get that. And with the small little staff that we have and so many things like this, it's, it's hard to come up with a system like that, but they have, what I've seen is the city administration has been committed to try to get these, this right, and try to do the best we can for, for the city. And if I, if anybody else disagrees or wants to add anything, please feel free. Or if I got something wrong, because I am new and I'm still learning. I would just had, thank you. I, I, to your point of if anybody disagrees, I, I feel like there's probably a lot of folks who disagree. They do not want to turn this into a back and forth. I met you all on the table. Because I want to make sure that this is.
Okay, Ma'am, since you, since you are saying you guys are new to all this.
Ma'am, can you go to the microphone if you want to speak? Thank you.
Okay, so since you guys say you guys are new to this and this and that, I think we're talking about the same. Can you, because since you are the more, with more experience, I, I believe that in more years or working and living in West Liberty, can you explain a little bit what's going on? Or all the addicts and that, because maybe people is. Maybe you can explain why some decisions are.
Yes. For a long time, the city has been committed to mediation regarding the rural district and the fire department. And all we got as an answer is, oh, we don't trust you. We have some doubts about financial statements and so on and so forth. And they have rejected every opportunity they had to sit with us and start this conversation.
I'm sorry, but I'm not asking. Please, please allow the councilman to finish his statement.
He's just repeating the same stuff.
You went first. Please, go ahead and let him finish his part.
That's.
Please, one more time, and I'll ask you to leave the floor.
I've been one of the most strong advocates in mediation for this situation, but there's no conversation when somebody starts a conversation saying, "Why did you choose so hard?" That was, I mean, individuals here.
That's not professional. You answered about what's going on. We're not talking about who, hate, whose. We're talking about.
The, the, the short, and I'll, I'll, the short and annoying, I guess, answer to this that I'm going to give you is that is the litigation. And I think, and I, I, I don't, I believe that nobody wants to misstep and say something that's going to hurt either party. And I think that that's the point that we're at. And I'm, and so, I, I understand the perception that it is hiding behind the litigation, but it's also a real fact that everything you say can, will be used against you, you know. So, we, we want to try as carefully as possible for this. And again, I can speak for myself, but.
Okay, last thing to ask. Again, nothing clear, and this just show, show that we are not professionals. We're playing, maybe because of the way I'm talking, that I, I didn't take what he said. Nothing clear. He's talking about one person. I don't care who's sitting over there or who that she, eight, sorry. But we need to talk about the problem. That's why I'm asking, because I know him, and I, I don't really know the rest of the people, but I know he's been there for a long time, or he will be a good person to explain what's the situation and what, what's going on. And obviously, you hear what he said. He didn't answer my question. He's in the city, I'm in the fire department. I would like to have a conversation with him, but clear, not talking about people. Talking about audits or whatever is going on, the clear, please. Because I think I'm losing my time in here, but I want to be here because we are a family. They are my family, and I'm here, believing. If you guys fire me from the fire department, it's fine. I will go to other place, or I will keep going to something different. But I'm a family.
Thank you. Can you, can you please wrap up? Thank you. This is going to go where? And I'd like to make this the last, the last comment as we move forward.
Why?
Why?
Why? Why?
Well, um, there's a whole other agenda, or there's a bunch of other things that need to be addressed. All right. Okay, then we're going, we're not going back and forth in discussion stuff. Then we can keep doing like I started with two minutes, and then you're done. If we want to try to have a discussion, that's great. But, or, or we can do just two minutes and you're done, and then we're done. So, Chief, please.
Thank you, Mary Mary. I am here at the civil side of the city fire department. I've been on the department for 20 years as well. Been here a long time. And I can say that my 20 years, these last two and a half have been very painful. And I want to say thank you to the mayor, because I have been very forthright with you. I have shared letters with what became the city council and such, because I wanted to be upfront with all this. We are a bunch of guys and gals that have given blood, sweat, tears. And what we've been through the last two and a half years to give this. And I don't know where the mindset or people are digging in, but the start is, you know, some comments have been made. It's going to be he said and she said. So, what I want to have is an ending to this. We try to be forthright and send out an MOU that we thought would be good for all parties. And we want to move forward. We have lots of stuff to do. We have a community to take care of, so we can continue to do it the way things are. That's all I have to say.
I have a quick question. Are the fire department funds separate from the general fund?
Online? Hold on, I can't hear you. It's a fluffing. Sorry to stop the. Online? I'm sorry, can you, whoever that was?
Yeah, I'm, sorry, I have a que, I have a question. Um, are the general funds separate from the fireman fund, department funds in the budget?
And I, I appreciate that question. Um, I don't want to get into the nitty gritty of that kind of stuff. Um, if you could, I, I mean, I, I guess we could answer it, but moving forward, um, I, for this meeting, and I'm not saying that there will be other meetings, but for this particular meeting, I'd, I'd like to keep it out of the weeds as far as that goes. Um, it is my, I'm not, I'm not going to, I, I don't know. Um, I, I do know, but I, I will, I will pass this to city manager. Or clerk. Who don't have to answer. Who, who don't have to answer.
Don't you think you should answer that question? That's kind of a pretty important one.
Working on the microphone, please. The fire, the fire department is a department of the city, and the general fund is, is what is, where the property tax dollars go into, called the general fund. And within the general fund, you have your emergency services, which are police, fire, and EMS. Also, within the general fund, you have your culture and recreation, which is in our city, the library, and parks and recreation, cemetery, and pool. And along with that, in the general fund, you have the council, your mayor, your administrative staff. They're also a part of that general fund. Another piece of it is the streets. Um, there's street maintenance that goes under the, that, there's animal control. Um, so those are departments within your general fund. That information is available online at the state auditor's office. It's called a chart of accounts that's set before, for all Iowa cities to abide by.
So, you robbed Peter to pay Paul?
I don't. I, I think we've had audits that show that that is indeed not the case.
My, my, my asking is because, so if I give money to the memorial fund earmarked for the department, but it goes into the general fund, how do I know my money for my loved one that I'm giving to the fire department or EMT is actually being used for that purpose I earmarked for?
That is, I, I understand it's a valid concern to have. Um, Lee, would you, would you like to answer this one? Um, again, when the funds come to the city, if you, for example, if you have a memorial check, and the memorial check is made out to the city of West Liberty, because the city of West Liberty is the account holder. The benefit of that memorial fund is, if even if it's not stated, if it's a metal to it saying it's a part of a memorial fund, we identify that it would go into either the fire trusted agency. That is an account that's established for memorial funds. On occasion, there are memorial funds that come in, and they're to be directed directly to the ambulance or EMS service. And a lot of times, they'll have that stated on there. If, if we're not understanding, or if we don't have any direction on them, then we would receive it into the fire trusted agency. I'm not going to say that on occasion that, um, has come back and stated, no, we had, this was to go into the ambulance. So then we make an adjusting entry to accommodate where those memorial funds go. So, with that said, the department has the opportunity to communicate to us if they are not in agreeance to where those memorial funds. They also are, have the availability to have a detailed report and look at the memorial funds, and as anybody in our community, as a public record, has the right to that information.
So, where do I find that online? Where is that going to be? So, it's public knowledge, or do I have to request it from you, Thea?
You can request it through a public records request with the city, sir.
Why should you have to request it when it should just be public information?
That's how the law works. Um, it is public information, and we can provide it to you, and we are, we are wired to in a certain timeframe. Um, if it, and this is a heads up, if this happens, there, there, by statute or by law, um, there is also a charge that can come with, with securing many, many documents. So, I want people to be aware of that, because it's, it's a function of how much time it takes to, to, to pull these documents, as some of you well know. Um, so, just throw that out there, and, and please.
Yeah, my name is Kim Brizik. I've worked in this town for 50 years. And I couldn't be more proud or happier for the services that our people have provided time and time again, caring for our properties and loved ones. So, yeah, it's probably an emotional thing, helping people in this town. And because I know, I sleep better at night knowing these guys are out there, and I don't have too many more comments of what they've already said. But I think what people just want is the transparency and stuff. Lay it out there, so we can all understand this to a better degree, and that's just what we're asking.
I've got a quick question. One question that I have is, where is the operating money for the fire and ambulance service coming from? What fund is that coming from? And at the end of the year, if there is money left over in that, that's unspent on that budget, where does that money go back to?
Is this a question we can answer tonight? The city council sets a city budget on an annual basis, and the funding for the fire and the EMS are funded through property tax dollars. And so, a percentage of our entire property tax is allocated towards that budget. There has been work to create a reserve equipment fund, and therefore, at the end of the year, if there are additional funds with property taxes that we owe, then those dollars can, by council, be placed in reserve funds for future purchases of equipment.
So, the money that's allocated for the fire and ambulance doesn't go back to the fire and ambulance funds?
It continues to stay allocated, and it would be a longer discussion to educate the budget, the cash side of the budget, and how those funds move forward.
My name is Sean Hassel. We were sitting in 95, something in the year.
No closer.
A little higher. Uh, so we moved here in 95, and I have a credit factor of EMS services in West Liberty. It took them minutes to come to my home and say this thing. Um, that being said, um, I've read the memorandum of understanding, I've read this. It seems very simple to me that the fire department just asking what they're due. Doesn't seem there's anything if you're out of your ordinary that they're requesting that percent of property taxes that are levied for fire, EMS, and other services to be in that account given to the department. So, as he and she answered, this whole problem is very simple. That fire department dropped their suit, and had the city sign that contract. That fire department dropped their suit and had the city sign their contract.
Good morning, everybody. Councilman Martin, I just wanted to say something real quick I might have. Obviously, I'm in a tight situation, being the city councilor of the fire department. There's, correct me, council, council, there's some things I could add to context. But I'd like to say is that I would there be, I would want to say more things that I have on my mind and to this. And this type topic that I'm in, there's certain things I can and can't say. I love the fire department. Obviously, I chose to go to the city council to pursue a different career than my next. I love the fire department, I just, like, for example, ladies, for example, Dr. Christiansen, Housewives, this year in every incident. They are my team, this is my team as well. You know, I have nothing against Jose and Karen over there. Obviously, there's some situations that we need to work on. This is on me as well. I'm trying to get out of my box and make things work and go forward, everybody. Like I said, we all have our own decisions, we all have our own mindset set. We all have our own opinions to certain situations. We have my team up here. I'd like to thank everybody for the respect they have today tonight, keeping everything still going. Obviously, we have been, maybe on the fire department side, we've been through a hardship in the last few years. And this is my first year, and hopefully we can pursue into something that we can work on and build for a better future. Thank you.
We're beginning to transition into that second item, city council public comments or correspondence. If there's anything specific that council wants to share that they've heard from the public about this matter or other matters.
Only that I received emails. There you go. Madam Mayor, only that I received email communications from other residents of city and rural voicing their concern about the fire department and city. We also had a shout out to Eddie Ortiz for being an outstanding city employee, so I want to commend Eddie. And also a complaint about the middle school kids that walk by the library that love to swear. And I, Karen and I have witnessed this when we were going to council meeting, they do like to swear. And, and then they go into the library and they're really rowdy. And they were, this person was hoping that maybe there would be some, some extra eyes on, if there were specific days. It was like Wednesday, after school, Wednesdays and Thursdays, on early outs. Yeah, there, maybe the, if there's some community members that have that time free and want to just hang out by the library and check these kids like we used to do, like, yeah, home monitor, that would be great.
And if there's no more comments, public comments that city council wants to share, we'll move on. City manager and or city clerk, public comments or correspondence? It's hard, I can't see.
The only correspondence that I received was somebody in the back of the seat, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry? I'm staying in the position of submitting. Right, with that, we will, we will move on to item eight, new business. Item A, resolution 20220419-19, a resolution to enter into a lease agreement between the city of West Liberty and Casey Bell and Nick Bell, doing business as 627 Sports Facility. Motion? Second. Discussion?
I don't know if Casey's here this evening, but Ken Brooks, who's with We lead, and then Joe Taylor actually started this project with Casey to get this facility built, out of that sports facility. We've taken several months to get a lease put together, we've been spared both sides. And Casey and Nick have signed it, and I would encourage council to go ahead and approve the lease, unless you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Council, anything to add? Can I have a motion then? Thank you, sorry. So, Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Can that, the resolution 20220419-19 passes by zero? Move on to item B, resolution 20220419-20, a resolution to approve and submit uncollectible utility billing in the amount of $25,522 to State of Iowa income offset program.
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Zacharias?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
That passes by zero. Item C, resolution 20220419-21, a resolution to approve and adopt writing off bad debt for uncollectible utility billings in the amount of $3,150.22.
Motion. Second.
Discussion?
Madam Mayor, just wanted to provide some history with the bad debt write-off. As you can see, that, that is considerably low number that we're having to write for bad debt. In the memo, you will see the information as to why that debt is being asked to be written off. But the city staff has done a really good job of collecting, identifying information, collecting all the correct information in order to submit to income offset which you approved previous to this resolution. So again, I would just like to take the opportunity, commend them for their work, and the bad debt write-off is stated specifically in the memo.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brown? Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dominion? Yes. Councilwoman Zacharias?
Yes.
Right, resolution 20220419-21 passes by zero. We'll move to item D, set the date for a public hearing on May 3, 2022, at 7:30 PM, to amending solid waste fees by ordinance.
Motion. Second.
And, and yes, the location, will that be in our normal spot in the library, as of now?
Madam Mayor, I have established a location at the community center. And I will provide more information on the dates available for the consent vote.
Is this a consent vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? So with a vote of five zero, we will have that public hearing on May 3, 2022, at 7:30 PM. It will be about amending solid waste fees from one to the other between the center. And we will move on to item nine, reports, employees, city engineers, city attorneys, city boards, committees, commissions. We'll start with city engineer Leo, you there?
Thank you, yes, I am. Okay, I'd like to make my report short today. Well, number two, brushing and televising, Northway well and pump actually showed up on site today. They did not set their, their rig yet, they told me they're going to do that Thursday. Then they said they have seven days, they need seven days of decent weather in order to get the brushing complete. They'll then send us televising within 30 days, and we can turn that around in two weeks with a report back to you. So hopefully, things continue to go the way they're, they're moving. And hopefully, Northway will get this, get the well brushed and televised. And that was my report for today. Do you have any questions?
I feel like I always ask you a question, Neo, I need to ask you a question. So on city staff minutes?
Just if there are any questions that we have to answer, anything?
Madam Mayor, we do have an additional update on the columbarium. Deputy City Clerk, has some information pertaining to columbarium update. Sorry. So they actually moved the first two columbariums today and got them sealed. And the other two will be here on the 27th, they will be sealed, and the project will be complete before the first of May. So huge project, Memorial's by Michael has done a wonderful job. They have worked with me through every single step. And without them, this would have been a lot bigger task, but we're going to be able to get it done for everyone. If you guys want to see them, they are all sealed and everything down there for you.
Right, great, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to extend my appreciation to Deputy City Clerk, on her diligence and spend fast work on getting that completed in a timely manner and be prepared for the spring with that. And Memorial Day weekend, we'll be able to have an opportunity for folks to see the completed project.
Thank you. Many meetings?
No, I presented minutes for ours, so... There's nothing further than to have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, folks.